Stand and go in line, members of the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have any additions?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. We have no additions or amendments to the agenda.
Would it be possible, or is it appropriate, to talk a little bit more about the tennis courts as to where we're going to go with that? Because we're just talking about the budget. And if we're talking about budgetary numbers, is that something we want to look at going into this budget? Or is it looking at next budget? Just so we have an idea where we're going to go with it for future. Because I don't know if I, at the last meeting, if we kind of decided what we're going to do with them? Or is that still kind of on hold or limbo? Or where are we going with that?
What I heard from us, we've actually had tennis courts on the agenda four times total. We went back and looked. And the way I understood is you had talked about doing it cement, and you wanted us to get those numbers. You had brought up that. And so those numbers aren't back in yet. So we were going to wait until we had all that in. We also found out from one of the tennis parents in Hastings, they do an interlock. So we're also getting that costed out.
Okay, so we're waiting. Is that...
But you can do, that goes from the...
I'm just wondering, if we go forward, we're going to be approving a budget. Do we look at putting that into this next coming budget? Or that's on, you know, it's going to, if it's going to be in there, great. If it's not, how do we, how do we do that when we don't exactly know when this is going to happen? Or if it's going to happen?
Well, you approve a cap, remember, you re, and it's good for the new people, especially here. You approve a budget with different departments and capital money. And so what you decide to do with that capital money will be decided later. There's nothing built-in line-by-line item. Kind of like personnel, we put in what we think the cost is going to be. But if a teacher retires and we hire a brand-new teacher at a lower cost, that's going to fluctuate your budget. And that's why you're always doing a revised budget. But the categories are what you're approving. You're not approving exact items tonight. Does that help a little bit?
I think so, I think so. I just...
I'm fine with you adding it. And we have a lot of tennis people here. But that isn't for, you keep looking at me, so I'm just saying, it's not really my choice to do that.
I was just wondering how it's going to be appropriated into the budget. You know what I'm saying? Because I'd like to see it in the budget as going forward. So if it's going to be two years out, three years out, we can budget for that as we go. You know, I don't know if we've ever done that. It's like, it always almost seems like it's reactive versus proactive.
Our facility committee has been working on the budget extremely. You have the five-year plan for the technology. You have five years for transportation. And we will very soon have the five-year, the facilities. I can't do anything without these final bids coming in.
No, understood. I'm just wondering if that's how we should do it going forward? Do we say, look, as we go forward? And this has already become a discussion item. I don't want it to be. So is there just, yeah, maybe we should just, do we want to put it as a agenda item? Discussion item? Or I'll just make a motion to make this a discussion item for later on.
I think a discussion item is just fine to have.
I'll second.
You want to make that where on the agenda?
It's a, it's a new, it's a new item. Maybe what we can do is put it as a 1A.
It's both business, yeah.
Well, it is old business, isn't it?
Yeah.
All right, we'll put it on your old business.
You talked about it a lot.
It's kind of a very old business.
That must be for him.
Yep. Okay. With that addition, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda with amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with amendment.
Motion by Rob.
I'll say.
Seconded by Kurt. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Scheduled presenters. We have some old friends with us. UNESCO folks. Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you guys. It's been a while.
Why don't you stand up near the flag there so we can get you on national TV?
Again, my name's Perry Schmidt. I brought, look, me, Brian Peterson. Brian heads up our measurement and verification. So our energy-saving guarantee. So we appreciate your time tonight. And I've met Katie before. We've been here for a lot of meetings going back. When the project was originally approved, I may remember that was September of 2015. So we've been at this for a little while. And where we're at now is that we consider this a project closeout. So we just wanted to give an update on how the construction went. As part of the financing, you might recall that a portion of the project has to pay for itself from savings. And some of those savings, we had estimated and calculated during the construction period. That construction period's over. That ended at the end of February. So now we're starting our annual measurement verification. Where we're going to have to reconcile the savings that were projected and guaranteed on an annual basis. So Brian's going to cover that. But I just want to tell you that, you know, from UNESCO's vantage point, we thought that the project went very well. You know, the bidding climate was good at the time. So I think we, you know, met some goals there. So we're very comfortable with the results of that. One of the things I'd like to do is just really point out what it's been like working with Dave. I think, you know, I work with a lot of districts. I don't know if you guys know how fortunate you are, seriously. And this isn't a paid advertisement today. But honestly, we work with a lot of different facility guys. And, you know, we had a come-to-Jesus meeting early on, once a project was, you know, kicked off. And we said, you know, here's how we're going to conduct business. Here's how the construction meetings are going to go on. It's nice to have that type of input from people, you know, like Dave. I think the end result is, again, a very good project. I think you're going to be very pleased with the savings that were projected. And have actually, we've exceeded them by a substantial amount just in the construction period. Now, we still have to prove ourselves out for the year of fear. So we're prepared to do that. But I think the good news is, is, you know, we're off on the right foot. I hopefully think that the investment's been worthwhile, just based on all the improvements that have been done. And I think financially, it's going to be a very good choice for you as well. So with that, I'll turn over to Brian.
Great, thank you, Perry. And as you mentioned, this is, I'm here to introduce the results and summarize the results. I have handouts here for each of the board members. These are summaries of the project savings, which I'm also going to present to you. So if it's okay with you to stand behind you. And there's eight copies. So if you each want to take one and pass it down. Perry mentioned, we just...
Can I add one more thing? I just wanted to remind you, so when the project was approved, it was a little over $12 million. And that, the way that broke down, there was actually two agreements. One was a professional services agreement. And that was right around $9 million, give or take a little bit. And that's funded through, you know, the levy, long-term facility maintenance levy and so forth. The other part, because some of those projects, you know, boiling and so forth, aren't eligible under the LTFM project. So we had to finance those under a guaranteed saving program. And that project was a little over $3 million. What Brian's going to be talking about is the closeout of that particular project. The whole project's been closed out. But what we're here to discuss and share with you is the savings that are resulting from that $3 million project. Where we have to make sure that there's sufficient savings annually to cover the debt service on the financing of that $3 million.
Thank you, Perry. That's actually what I want to talk about, is that energy savings, part of it. The savings were very good. And I think at the end of this, I want you to tell other people. That's going to be the hidden message in this presentation. And for those of you that are not familiar with Devani's, I don't know if you have heard of Devani's. On every pizza box, they say, "If you like it, tell others. If you don't, tell us." I like it for two reasons. One is that they're cared, they care about their quality. They want good pizza. And I want to eat good pizza. But they want to continually improve. So if you don't like it, go tell them. They want to hear about it. They've been in business since 1975. And that's not by an accident. And if you've been to a wild hockey game, you'll see there's Devani's inside of the Excel Energy Center. So we want you to tell others. So savings accrued, as Perry mentioned. So what we're looking to do is verify during the implementation, ending in February. We found the end of the project savings. We had guaranteed, we're typically very conservative, just under $20,000. So that was important for the cash flow of the project. And we verified, because of the savings, that we had over $62,000 in savings verified. I'd be happy to go into the details, but I'm not at this time because of time. But the great news is it was far exceeding our expectations. Where are the energy savings come from that were in the project? So if you don't recall, we have lighting is the largest contribution of savings. There's an energy management system and controls. And the mechanical system, which was converting your boiler system over to hot water. All of those added up to 83% of all of your savings. So those are the big things that we're going to talk about. Real quick, lighting system and controls. That was probably the no-brainer of the project. You have a better quality of light in the area with LED lights. The lights from LED last about three times longer than compact fluorescents. But the best part was that we projected savings. We measured about 19% of all the fixtures. And we verified with measurements, they were 43% better than what we expected. Mostly due to design. And once we got into design and started picking products, the design of new lights were getting so much more efficient. Furthermore, after we, during the implementation of the project, Dave Peterson and our project team found other areas. We grew the scope and added more lights and found another 23% of savings on top of that. So right out of the gate, our number-one contributor savings was fantastic. So great story to share. It was a really good project. The next is the controls. That's your ventilation system. That's turning on the heating and cooling systems. That's your ventilation in all of your spaces. That's a harder project to verify. We see it when the space is not comfortable when we come in. In the morning, it's cold or it's hot. That's what we're trying to do, is make sure it's comfortable, quality learning environment when the students are in session. When they're not, we don't want the systems to be shut off and conserve energy. So with that, we fully commission the systems. And I'm going to share with you at the end how we ensure that those savings are sustained. That's our biggest challenge. Because with changing of set points and schedules, we could lose those savings. And the last one, the last big item, is mechanical system improvements. That's the boiler improvements. Those are efficiency improvement system changes, and they're working great. So all in all, the top three, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on the others, just because, as you can see, there's not a lot of savings attributed to them. But the savings from those measures are, have been verified as well.
We're saving money on our vending machines?
Correct.
You never told me.
I don't use as much. It's pretty nominal. You've seen that little, a little light above it? That's a little occupancy sensor. That, what it does is if nobody's around, it'll shut the, it'll literally unplug the machine. And literally, it'll metaphorically...
So real quick on the numbers, I see the 50, 40, 30. So all improvement systems, you're over 50,000 savings per...
This was projected.
Yes. Over what period of time is the 50,000?
This would be annual savings. And the savings we're looking to verify is over a 15-year period. So this, starting March 1st, is where we're starting the measurements. Great questions. Where do the savings come from? It matches up very well with the geography or the area of your different schools. So nearly two-thirds of the savings are in the middle school and high school. And about a third in the elementary. And the ALC and the bus garage make up less than 5%. There might be some additional opportunity in the future to add more in the ALC and the bus garage with some lighting. But otherwise, majority of your facilities were addressed. And what can we, just by moving forward, I'm getting close to the end. Right now, we're guaranteed $186,000 a year, energy and operational savings. So it's not just energy, it's also operational savings. And right now, based on especially lighting, we're expecting over $220,000 in annual savings from this, these retrofits, this project. The key will be working with Dave on the energy management system and giving feedback and making sure that's continually running efficiently. And here, I just want to have some really quick slides, just to give you some examples of how we intend to work with Dave. This is our new software, it's some data analytics. Dave was very excited to share, and I, he asked me to share it with you, so I wanted to do so. So here's a story to tell. The story is, in the, is one example, some unit ventilators. Unit ventilators are a challenge to maintain. But aside from that, we need to make sure that their schedules are being maintained. And for various reasons, sometimes they're not working properly. Sometimes they need to be maintained or tweaked. Or sometimes a teacher comes in earlier or later and needs to turn on their ventilation system. All of them are valid reasons for things running longer. What I'm excited about to show you is data visualization. To visualize all of your equipment, each one of these rows represents a unit ventilator. The very top row is your schedule of hours that we expect to see that, those systems run. You see, the bars at the very top are just a little bit narrower. That's not a big deal. What we're looking for, this is the month of May, up through today. What we're looking for, and you can see them quickly, are the weekends. Yep, all the systems are off. All the systems are off. We have a couple to talk about with Dave. We'll talk about those another day.
Pick a fan. It was busy.
It was a busy time? There's always a ballot there, there's always some reason. And we got to figure out what that some reason is. And sometimes it's, it is what it is. So that's last month. If I go to the previous month of April, again, you might see very similar results. And again, a couple, couple small issues. And none of those really stick out to me as significant issues. These are minor details, quite honestly. But that's where Dave is committed to really being sure we can maintain these schedules. The second example, story I want to share, is more about an air handling unit that serves the elementary school. This is HU-8. Nobody really knows what HU-8 means, except for Dave, perhaps. It's the area that serves the self-classrooms. And in that particular unit, there was an issue that we found. This blue bar is that fan running on. The red bar, this is one we, represents one it should be running. So it's running a little bit longer. Then we found that it didn't shut off. So you see at the end of the week, on Friday, it didn't shut off at night. And up at the top is the outside air damper. That's how much ventilation is coming into the space. We found that it was not shutting off. And that went into the next week, the unit stayed running. So we found this. Sometimes that happens with the commissioning of systems. And last Thursday, when we found this issue, we changed some set points. And happy to report, on Friday, that issue no longer appears. This last weekend, it was shutting off. So the key objective to learn from this is, one, it's still under warranty. We're still commissioning and adjusting. But even after we're done commissioning the project, we'll still have this system to help maintain and find when set points change, when occupancy points change. So we'll continually be able to monitor this. So in conclusion, we believe UNESCO has helped to improve the Cannon schools, Cannon Falls schools. If you agree, please share with others. Thank you. Any questions?
No, I just want to say thank you for answering all my 10 o'clock-at-night emails. I mean, how many times this summer do you think I was emailing you guys and talking to you? And it's just been a really very, very good relationship with UNESCO. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have a consistent savings every year like this now?
I would, I would, I really would, because from the lighting, they're very dependent of system savings. As long as Dave doesn't start taking out the lights, which he wouldn't, and you're still turning on and off the lights as you normally do, I would expect those savings will be sustained. The big challenge will be the controls, those set points and schedules. That's the challenge. And that's also the challenge of Dave, to have the support of the board when it comes to maintaining a facility and schedule. And it's not our intent to stand in the way if there's a reason to use that facility. We want you to use it more. But we want to help when you are using it to be efficient as you can. Thank you.
You know, I think what's really nice about being able to see that data is the simple fact that the building automation system is just something that you see the equipment running or not running. It doesn't show the data that he just put up there. That's unique, and that's what's really nice. You're not going to just go to your screen and go, "I wonder how air handle number eight's running." You know, and just to look at it and see how long and go into the history. You don't do that. But to have that information at your fingertips is a nice benefit that I don't think I really expected to have after the project was done. Because you have a unit like that that's continually running, it pops right out at you. You can see it right away. Hey, we got a problem there. You can get on it quickly. So that's, you know, a real benefit that compared to what we have and what we look at for our system, is quite a bit different and very beneficial.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Everybody?
For me, I'm not sure.
Any other questions for us? Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Perry. Thanks, Brian.
You keep your time. Scheduled presenters. We are finished there. Reports and communication. Ryan, what do you have for us?
All right. Well, starting off with, excuse me there, sports. We have, now that kind of the school year's winding down, we're starting to see a lot of the big heavy hitters for sports. So they're finally wrapping up their seasons and starting to get near the end. Tomorrow, we have track subsections for boys and girls. And Wednesday, we have golf varsity conference at Byron for both boys and girls. And then also on Wednesday, softball subsections. Hopefully, our girls can make it. And then on Thursday, we have baseball sections at John Birch. So you guys can come out and cheer them on there if they make it. So we have a lot going on for sports. And then kind of for extracurriculars, trap shooting. Just finished our last shooting event. And our lead shooter, Elena Robinson, or Anna Robinson, or Anna Benson, excuse me. She has an average this season of 22.5, which is the highest our team's ever had. And she's ranked right now in our section, I think she's fourth or ninth out of around 100 girls or so. So that's really cool. And we have state coming out in the second week of June. So that's always interesting to go up to Alexandria. So trap shooting's staying strong. We had the academic award ceremony last Wednesday. And around $158,000 or so was given out in awards. And Quinn Saban won the Gemini Scholarship. So two years in a row for that, which is hopefully something we can keep up with. Student council had their first meeting last Wednesday for the new council, and they're getting ready for next year. And then the spring play is happening this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So that's what we have going down.
Easy time?
Thank you.
Board committee reports, this is not our meeting, I don't think, for committee reports, is it? So we'll, we'll move on from that one. Public input. Anyone has an issue that they would like to discuss with the school? Jermaine-to-school property or other things? Now is your time to speak.
Obviously, we're here for the tennis team, and we just like to see something happen. We know that what has come out is that, you know, it looks like we would play away matches at this point. And we're just looking for a better solution at this point. That doesn't seem like a fun season to always play your matches away. To have four courts that you really can't play matches on, we can do drills on, but it just makes it very difficult. And we're just trying to, I know you said you've talked about it for a while. And, you know, we just saw it in the paper two weeks ago, that's why we're kind of starting here, that, you know, it's always been solved. I've been coaching for 22 years, and this is the first time I've come to a board meeting, you know, about tennis courts. Because the board does their job and, you know, gets it done. So that's sort of our question is, you know, they haven't been maintained, you know, probably for the last seven years or so. And that's different. The courts, you know, they've been 17 years. They were maintained probably every four years. They need to be resurfaced. That's what tennis courts need to have done. And it's probably been seven years now, and it just gets worse, worse, and worse after, after that. And so that's why we're at this point. In the paper, it said we had $40,000 to play with with a $20,000 grant. My question is, is if we can use that to resurface, maybe do a little extra patchwork at this point?
I'm going to, oh, just correct one little, small thing. That $20,000 is if you do a re, a new project. So that would be rebuilding. I could probably try to find another one. The back end was presented by the city, and that one was for a...
To redo the whole structure?
Yeah, that isn't for resurfacing.
Okay. And so it's still, I think, that $40,000, I would guess $50,000 is what it costs to resurface. And, you know, we've done that every year, every four years, I would guess. So you might have that number. And then we can plan it for three or four years, knowing that maybe we need to do a bigger project. And we can plan for it a little better. And then if you want to redo it, you know, redo it. Ironically, I was talking to someone this morning, and the courts in Rochester were built by Dr. Mayo's. And they maintain them and resurface them. And they've been there for 97 years. And this is the first time they're going to redo the structure. And so it just surprises me that after 17 years, we already have to redo a structure. That just, I'm not a, I don't build tennis courts, so I don't know that. But it just seems odd to me that that's the solution that we're leaning towards, instead of just maintaining them every four to five years. And they should be usable, I guess.
The public forum section of things usually is a statement made. In this case, we probably won't answer your input question. We'll, we'll deal with some of those things a little bit later on, though.
And we know we're not on the agenda. I mean, we're, obviously, this just happened. We'd like to get on the agenda next time. We'd like to go to the facility meeting. We, we don't know when those are, so we're hoping to find out if we can attend a facility meeting to find out what's going on there. My process is to go through my boss, and hopefully that he relays that to what happens. And so, you know, obviously, we'd get more involved. So that's why we're here.
When we discuss it a little bit, I think some of your questions or some of your history may be resolved just a bit. So just bear with us.
Yep.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move along. Consideration to approve the finance report.
I can't do that because Mr. Davidson is still at Softballs. We'll come back to it. Unless you want, I can walk you through it, if you want to go in order.
He's on his way.
Is he on his way?
Let's, let's just skip down, and we'll just, we'll pull him back in as we need to. Next item is a consent agenda. Items under this are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any item, we can always remove it and speak to that item on a singular basis. Have we had an opportunity to look at the consent agenda? Any questions involved? If not, I'd hope for a motion to approve.
Another motion?
Motion, motion by Kurt, seconded by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Discussion of the tennis courts. We have spoken about that. We've spoken about the deterioration of the courts. We've, we've done some landscaping to see what we could do to save what we could, I think about a year ago, right? Taking off some block and such.
We eliminated a retaining wall that had been repaired a couple different times and kept collapsing. It was going to be our first step into the maintenance of the courts because it kept collapsing. It kept collapsing the court also. So we did resolve that, yes.
I need to put you on the spot, I guess, and maybe talk a little bit more about the historical need, I guess, after the tennis courts are so relatively new. What's happened to, to put them in the situation they're in now?
Well, the courts, for, you know, several years, weren't done before I ever showed up here. So I guess ultimately what happened is by the time we got to, you know, looking at, which was almost two years ago now already, looking at starting to fix that retaining wall, that was the first step. And it all had to do with, you know, our budget and how we were going to attack this. Step one was to fix the retaining wall because it was collapsing. There was no point in putting resurfacing on it if it kept collapsing and it was cracking and breaking off, which it literally was doing. And then, of course, we had to let that settle for a year. Keep in mind, the entire tennis court was a built-up surface. So it wasn't a nice, hard, compact surface to begin with. It was built up. So a lot of other surfaces that maybe weren't built up are going to last a lot longer. So during this time, I think in two, January of 2015, we were going to look at doing something in the spring. Had a few companies come out, give us some ballpark figures. It was January, we weren't going to do it at that time. But we wanted to know and look towards spring, what we were going to be doing. So we got those numbers. There was still a little bit of snow on there. They just kind of gave us a round figure. We had some other things come up. We had a major construction project and some serious maintenance going on. We then looked at getting our bids more, more solid because we wanted to move forward. Well, at that point, a year had passed. So then we had the companies come out and take a serious look at them. That's when they noticed that the old resurfacing had started to bubble and crack and crumble. That changed everything. And if you go up to the courts, which we had the invite for all the board members to go up there to show this, this problem, that's going to require a significant amount of work compared to just simply resurfacing. That's going to take sandblasting, grinding, taking the entire surface down to be able to resurface again. Otherwise, you're putting that on top of something that's just going to crack and crumble off.
Is that why all of the resurfacing bids won't guarantee their work?
Yes.
Oh, I see.
They'll do it.
They'll do it because you're asking them to do it. But those are all coming in at about $69,000, $70,000?
Yeah. They pretty much guaranteed, and the other problem we had was the size of the cracks. They pretty much guaranteed, and the other problem we had was the size of the cracks. Along with the size of the cracks, which was another part of the guarantee, they didn't want a guarantee, there are significant cracks out there, they're big. But we also have bird bathing or water pooling that was starting, which is the beginning stages of the subsurface failing, collapsing. They said, yes, of course, they can put in something to, to even it out, but they're simply going to be moving the puddle. You know, and there's only so much they can do. And if you go out on the course and you look, you can see the discoloration of the areas where water is standing and creating some of these problems. Now, I, I don't know who did the surface last or why it's bubbling or peeling up, but it's gonna require completely taking it down if you're going to do it right. Now, that does not fix the, the water pooling and that also does not fix the cracks. And we also have another problem is, is where the posts go in, the posts are heaving and coming out. So this also would have to be done. So with the combination of all of that, we're looking around seventy thousand dollars for a simple resurface with no guarantee, which most likely, likely will, will result in the cracks coming back within a year. How long will the surface last? Uh, it's no, it's hard to tell because we have pooling water and other issues. Can that be done? Yeah, absolutely, it can be done. We could definitely plan to do that. So multiple meetings with facilities committees, okay, do we fix half of them? Do we fix all of them? How does that affect tennis? How does that affect games? These are all the things that we're trying to discuss. Now, of course, at that point, we're, you know, we're wondering, you know, their, the recommendation was, you're better off just starting over. If you're already dumping seventy thousand dollars into these things for a Band-Aid temporary fix, what's it gonna cost? So at that point, we got some numbers in for an estimate on what it would cost to completely replace them. Now, keep in mind, this was just one company. I did not get several bids for the complete demolition and starting over of this process because I don't have any specific direction on which way we wanna go at this point. Do we wanna fix half of them? Do we wanna fix all of them? I'm not gonna bring these companies in until I have some specific direction from either the committee, the board, or a group together to say, what do we wanna do? Once we do that, we can get solid numbers, but these guys only had these numbers for thirty days. Reason being is, our price was good in March, but I promise you today, they're different. Now they're booked up, they're busy. So it's all a matter of timing, too. How long can you hold on to that bid?
Now Jake, you've had more people reaching out to you because this gets out that we're looking, and you had a couple more companies that are gonna be out here at noon tomorrow to kind of see what they think. So, I mean, I feel like the reason why we're gonna wait till the next board meeting to bring it up is we wanted to have all this data collected. We had a facilities meeting and I gave everyone kind of a job of what to do so that when we got this information, it would be all accurate and current. So I guess, I mean, that's why it wasn't on the original agenda for tonight. I think it's great to talk about again, but that's why. But I think we'll know more at noon tomorrow, too. I know Dave and I were excited to hear that this company kind of heard about everything and they're willing to come out again, so can't hurt. They did Lake Cities, so they're a reputable company.
Are they looking at resurfacing or the whole?
They're gonna look, they're gonna look to see, they're gonna give their opinion, basically a second opinion, and then, you know, give us an idea on both.
Before we can give direction, though, we need to know, what do it cost to replace all the courts and half the courts? I mean, can they give you bids both ways?
We have all those bids as well.
Yeah. Basically, your entire bid for replacing it all, cut it in half for half of them.
Okay. I'd still like to get more. I'd like, we have two for resurfacing and two for complete remodel, I'd still like to get that third one for both. And then I'd like to get a bid for the quick and snack or whatever we wanna call those things, the Lego.
Yeah, and they pretty much have those online, so we can, you can have the pricing for square footage.
If Hastings loves theirs, I call them, they love theirs, so it's worth looking into.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's Minnesota State High School acceptable to play on a match. It might be fine if I, I know they use it for middlestool matches only, so.
Oh, I see.
I think that would be a waste of money, in my opinion. We'd rather see courts, not snap courts.
Way to dash my drink.
So what are we looking at for, for the alternatives? And we're looking at resurfacing versus total tear down?
No, when we say total tear down, we talk about...
That's what I want, yeah.
To what degree, we go on all asphalt that's currently down to the dirt and start over again?
That's one option. They also do milling and you can mill it down and resurface over the top of it also. And like I said, I'm, I'm more than happy to continue to get as many bids as we need. Now, keep in mind, asphalt companies we're replacing, there's a ton of them. But remember, with asphalt, it's a very, very small job when they're doing forty-five miles on I-94. You know, I mean, so to have an asphalt company come in is gonna be difficult. It can be done, but there's more of those compared to just the surfacing companies. There's not a ton of people out there that are doing the surfacing. It took forever to get these guys to come out, I'll be honest with you. I mean, it was call after call after call after call, you know, the, it's just not a whole lot of people that'll come out. And, you know, at this point, we have so many different options. We have a base price for all the options we wanna go. Now I feel like we need to decide which way we really wanna focus on and focus on those numbers. That's kind of where I'm at, it's like, how many more people do I bring in when we're struggling with the price of the resurfacing? Why, you know, how much further am I gonna go with these guys?
So the lady at SSC told me that resurfacing should last about seven to eight years. So it's seventy thousand dollars, so ten thousand dollars a year for research, it seems so high.
Typically, a court, if they're in decent shape to resurface, is about five thousand dollars a court. That's an average, right there. So it's typically not that much.
So might I go back to...
But it's in really rough shape, that's why it's, they have to blast it and sand it down, that's why we're up to seventy thousand right now.
What I heard early on is that the location and the setup for the, for the courts is, is not a deal because it's a raised up surface. So are we talking, no matter what we do, are we gonna be faced with this over and over again and not able to achieve a long-term, lower-priced solution because of the location?
I don't think so. I think with time, everything settles and then you repack it and it gets better, just like if your driveway had settled, if you get it fixed, it's probably gonna last for a long, long time. It's just that initial, you know, we've had, what, seventeen years there?
I don't know.
Is that ballpark?
I believe so.
This first one looks like two thousand, it was in, it was done two thousand.
So, you know, I think if you go again, you've packed it down pretty darn good and you, I think you'd be in good shape for a very long time.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm sure they did the very best they could, I mean, it's their nature.
I'm just looking forward, you know, if it's gonna be a repeat issue, why would we do the same thing in the same place?
Yeah.
If it's not, okay, then I get that.
And I would have a hard time guaranteeing it would never happen again, you know, but I would be optimistic to say that it would not. I think you'd be good, it's, it's not like it's terrible. So I'd be, I'd be optimistic about it working out well.
Kurt, you had something.
Well, you know, and there's also been discussion about where do we go with it, but have we also come to this conclusion as to where, I have to bring it up, where does the tennis team, the person, the future of tennis gonna be in this district? You know, if we're continuing, if we're gonna support it through and through, then that changes our whole idea of where we're gonna go with these tennis courts. If, if the HBL is starting to solely, you know, eliminate tennis, is that something that we need to look at, too? It's just something that, it's a reality here, you know, and then also we've got these tennis courts and we're not, the HBL's not supporting it, it's not, you know, I think we're, we're doing a lot of things and we're thinking a lot of different ways, but we don't even know what we wanna be three, four years from now, you know, we're, we're not, you know what I'm saying? It's like, where's our money gonna go? Is it gonna be the best use of the monies or is its program gonna, you know, be here four years from now? I hope so, but we don't really know right now.
Well, we have to maintain the courts, we need to become a self-fulfilling craft sector. If we don't maintain the courts and they can't play, they're not even gonna play.
I understood, but that, that leads us into, do we resurface or do we do the whole chameleon? You know, I, that's something we need to be totally honest about here right now, too.
Just to clarify, nobody's, nobody's dropped tennis. It's just not primary schools have it. So the ones that have had it, still have it, nobody's dropping tennis.
No, so the HBL always, 'cause we had a discussion here a week, two weeks ago, saying that the programs are dying.
There are, there are many HBLs that have it.
Tennis is gonna be around, I mean...
Okay, so what we had from information last week is...
Bring back boys tennis.
Yeah.
So, okay, 'cause the way it was last, two weeks ago, it sounded like tennis wasn't, wasn't really gonna be there for a lot of areas, and that we were one of the very few left that was playing tennis.
In this area.
In this area, that was my, so...
There's only four.
Four conference teams.
Kyler, if you count Kyler.
So was there more before that or, so that was never even an issue then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think some boys teams have dropped, you know, we dropped our boys team, I think some schools have dropped boys, some of that, but as far as girls, I don't know if anybody's dropped it in twenty years.
Okay, sounds good.
You know, I think that's, that's part of our problem, we're having discussions in so many different directions. When we moved our courts from the, the swimming pool, which was our only alternative for a little while, I think, before they tore those other ones up.
There are five in the back, and the city has its swimming pool courts.
We thought we possibly had a, a commitment from the city to assist us in, in any changes that were made. We accepted the role, I thought, as the, the maintainer of it. But anything major that would go on with the courts, because they're used more by the city in actuality than they're used by our school, I think, they have some skin in this game. So we're looking at tennis as a long-term, we're looking at the construction and whether we're, where we're going with that. We're also looking to see, if this is our responsibility, where's the district gonna come up with three hundred K? And maybe that's a, a movable number, but, you know, we thought when we sold the Wastito property, we could, we could use that to bankroll the, the repair on the, on the courts, but that, that's not happening. So we've got a city and school conversation going, whether or not we need eight courts and just in general, how, how deeply can we go here and how much can we afford that we didn't expect in, I don't know, when did we sell Wastito? Last fall?
December.
So all of this has come up onto our plates and it's just one other area that we weren't intending to spend money on, so we've got a lot of different dynamics there and it's, it's been taxing on us, but it hasn't just happened. Dave, it goes back more than two years and, and you know, when you, when you get an article in the Beacon and it's eight paragraphs long, they pick and choose where their priorities are for discussion, but we have discussed this and we've discussed it several times and we're scratching our heads to know where we go. So we just wanted you to let, let the team know, let your representatives know that it's, it's got a lot of different heads to it.
Yeah, absolutely, and with discussion kind of bouncing around like you mentioned, for me, on my end of it, it's hard for me to focus on exactly what I'm supposed to be putting together. So I would love to have them completely redone, folks, it would be fantastic, I think we all would. I'm a hundred percent for that, but as was mentioned, a, a program needs to be in place to then maintain them so we don't come to this again. I don't wanna go ahead and put a Band-Aid on it and then have this happen again. If we're going to do this fix, I want the, the best bang for our buck. I want them then put into a maintenance program so we're maintaining them as we should. With everything that I do, I want that, but to be able to have those functional and in great shape would be fantastic, it's just a matter of how do we get there.
Back in two thousand, we spent a hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars to put them in, so I guess I'm not totally surprised that it's at two eighty-eight now. What I told Jake and Dave is I want three solid quotes on complete reconstruction and I want three quotes on resurfacing, 'cause I think then you guys can really make your decision. Right now, we have two and two, one is like, we don't guarantee, well, that's not really a bid then, if you're not gonna guarantee your work. I want three that'll do it and do it right and give us that. So we should have that by next time, I think, I know Jake with the one tomorrow, that should help a little bit. We have that with the city, they did organize a new group, if you haven't heard, there's a Parks and Rec organization and I have reached out to that rep because I think this fits a little better under his umbrella. Before, when we met, Bob was nice enough to come down with me and we met with Public Works and I don't think it meshed very well with what their scope is, so maybe with this new organization, we'll pick up some ground there, too.
Is it possible to just go right over the top right now with the three inches of new asphalt or...
You'd have to mill it.
You'd have to mill it?
Yeah, you can't just go on top.
Okay. Did you have them split it, eight courts, four courts?
We did.
Okay.
We have four courts and they just cut it in half, it's one thirty-nine, seven, and then eight courts is two forty-eight, eight.
Now, what's the difference between doing the eight and the four? If you have four, can you still host? You can't, right? You have to have eight to host.
That's, that's the problem, I learned that, too, you can't host with four.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we seriously looked at that and once we found that out, it's like, well...
Well, yeah.
Okay, that doesn't, that doesn't solve our problem completely.
Right.
We thought, we'd even talked about charging community members to play tennis there, but that's a lot of five-dollar fees to get to that amount, so hopefully generate enough revenue doing it that way.
Sure.
I think for me, I know you're, like you're chasing your tail with the different options. For us, it's, it's short-term, long-term fixes and cost for each is what really, I really want to see. You know, if we put a Band-Aid on, how long's it gonna last? Then what's, then what are we gonna do for the long-term fix if we're gonna do a short-term fix first? I don't wanna see a short-term fix and then no discussion about long-term fix. If we're gonna do the long-term fix now, then how do we afford it? But that, to me, is, it's either gonna be, do it all right the first time and we bite the bullet, and I can't say that this is necessarily the right time, I think it's the right way, but I don't know if this is the right time. Although it is a short-term, but now we really have to put that long-term in place and when it does come time to redo and do it the right way, we're prepared by this fiscally for it.
Yeah, and just so you know, the, the quotes that we got, I mean, these, these are quality people that do a lot of courts throughout, you know, whoever, you know, these aren't just, you know, jokers here, these, these guys are, this is what they do, they've been doing it for many, many years. And once again, they can resurface it, but with the condition that they're in and with the size of the cracks that they have, they just don't wanna say, okay, we'll, we'll do the best we possibly can to make it last as long as we can. But next year, when you have a crack going through there, they don't want their phone ringing going, why did you do such a cruddy job on our courts? You know, that's, that's what they're leery of. They just wanna make sure it's perfectly clear that we have some serious issues there, but the resurfacing of it, it is a possibility, it can be done. And, you know, maybe it'll last a couple of years, I, maybe it'll last four years.
I mean, when you say that, if you are gonna just resurface, it's gonna be maybe temporary, depending if we're gonna have a long-term goal, can you go with another asphalt company that would go do the job, which probably wouldn't be so noticeable for the normal person on the tennis court, but it probably wouldn't be as good as these other companies that do it, but could you do that and, and see if they would be capable? You said there's other companies out there that do it, that would do it, maybe.
Well, the resurfacing and the asphalt are two different parts.
Yeah, how about, um, just the resurfacing?
I guess I'm not sure what your question is.
They wouldn't be able to do the resurfacing. If you're just gonna lay down asphalt, let's just say new asphalt in general.
No, I mean, put it this way, the asphalt would be one company and the resurfacing is going to be a different company completely.
So let's say just re-asp, uh, re-asphalt.
Yup.
Could you go with a knockoff group that would be able to do a good job for a temporary fix, you know, for five years?
Well, I don't know, no, 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 because if you're talking like filling the cracks and doing that kind of stuff, that's not how they do it. That's the surfacing company that does those repairs. The only thing the asphalt company will do is either rip it out or mill it down and do an overlay. That's all they'll do. So those, those are your two options that you have with the asphalt company. But as far as any repairs on the surface right now, that's gonna be your resurfacing company. They'll do patches over the cracks, they'll do the resurfacing, the relining, they can replace the posts and do all that kind of stuff, so they'll do everything but the asphalt.
If we have to spend twenty-five percent of the total to have these things completely done for just a short-term fix, it, in my mind, it doesn't seem like it's a smart bang for the buck. We're spending sixty grand to get them and we got, we got no guarantees past the next year and maybe not even that, it just seems like throwing money to the wind there. I understand the need to have some home courts here and some home tournaments, but I just don't know if that's our, our best way to spend. When you sho, when you said short-term, Rob, were you thinking of just for the foreseeable future?
I'm looking at probably four years or less for a short-term and in that time, we as the district need to put together a long-term fix that will, if we're talking about redoing everything, whatever project it takes, you know, I've been saying it for years, we've been talking about this for years, where will we get the money to do it? Because what is it going to be expensive?
Truthfully, it took a long time for me to put away, put away, put away to save this $40,000. I mean, when you see the budget tonight, we're down 88.5. I had been putting this away.
It's a bond or something like that.
You could do a bond, yeah.
Right. But I mean, that's one of those things that we got to look at and say, okay, to do it the right way, how are we as a district going to?
The guy we're going to meet with tomorrow has extremely high hopes. He hasn't seen it. Let's get all this done. He says he can guarantee it for seven years. That's how long they're supposed to last. Let's meet with him. We really, that's why, again, we just, I'd rather have this and we have this beautiful information we can give you because then I think you can make a really solid decision.
I liked the discussion tonight, though, and nothing against them. I think it'll help even with tomorrow's meeting to kind of get a feel for where the board's at, where you may not have known before this conversation. I think this is good.
I'm just kind of excited. He reached out to the AD instead of the facilities guy, I think because that's what he normally does. They talk to ADs or something, or I don't know how that all happens, but didn't he sound very promising?
Yep.
So, maybe he's just Mr. Positive, but he sounded really, I'm excited to meet with him tomorrow at noon. I think it's going to be kind of fun, so.
Can we go to Turf?
What's that?
Can we go to Turf?
I say we do Wimbledon and do like grass.
Yeah. Slade.
Is Turf a playable Minnesota State High School?
I would guess not, but we'd have to check into that.
All the football.
Hey, you run that.
Ball, if you get some time, plug into that. Plug into that.
Yeah, you can come up at noon, though.
Yeah, do that. I think that you can carry the ball to the team and tennis people.
Perfect.
Okay. Good conversation.
Josh is back, too.
Josh, let's shift gears and we'll step back to the finance report. And we give you plenty of time, plenty of time.
I know these kids have finals. If you want to step out, it's okay.
Thanks for coming, everyone.
If you want. It's up to you, but I know you're in finals week, so it's up to you.
Thanks, guys.
Was that like signal or something?
I don't know.
I think it's good.
And who stays?
This guy.
Mr. Davidson?
It was varsity playoff game. They lost 4-0.
Yeah, not bad. Baseball 1-1-0 is field chance.
Really?
1-0.
Sounds like the Gophers.
Finance?
We're ready for finance.
Finance for budget, which one are we on? Finance. All right. So, a brief one, we have the preliminary fiscal 18 budget on the agenda. So, this is just cash flow through the end of fiscal year. The big things to note are going to be the video and the core accounting taxes. Usually when we have our tax payments or settlements, that reduces the ideas payment or the payment from the state. We'll get the actual number in from the county later this week to what you have there as an estimate, but it's a pretty good approximation of what we'll be seeing. Like I said, we still have some funds holding out in the building construction funds mainly because we can earn a little better interest in that than we can elsewhere and cash flow wise, we don't need to have it into our general fund balance right now. So, those ones will be included when you get to our fiscal year end audit. So, what I just see here is that cash flow wise, in a pretty decent position not to have to do any borrowing through the end of fiscal year. After completion of the initial budget for fiscal year 18, we'll start building the cash flow worksheet for the entire fiscal year 18 after we approve hopefully the budget tonight. So, if there are any questions, I can do my best to answer what you have.
Just a general question. We're looking at about 2.86 at the end of the fiscal year.
Yep.
How do we normally, I know we have the building project, that's been really increased our cash flow and I always figured that was a part of this and now in the beginning, not to account for that, but is this, you said there's a little bit left to pay out on?
Yeah, there's still some accounting, there's nothing that, I mean, not millions of dollars, obviously.
Right.
You'll see that you just have a better position of cash now. It's not the fund balance, so it's important not to tie that out to fund balance, especially to general fund balance as we look at it. The numbers will come closer as we get to the end of fiscal year with the audit, but as far as cash, certainly a large part is due to the building construction fund and another part is just where we're at with receiving funds from the state and so forth. So, we're doing well there. It's helping us to not have to do any borrowing. It certainly is a higher number than we normally see. You know, it was probably three, four years ago, we were borrowing constantly in order to make, you know, payments each month for either payable or for board bills.
Right. I mean, it just seems a little bit higher taking up the building project still.
Yep. And you still combined, you've got a healthy debt service balance that will be in there to meet our payments and obligations. There's about 400 grand is the OPEB trust within there, so there's different factors that vary to that, but certainly it is important not to look at cash as the same as general fund, but certainly not sit in a position we have 2.5 million dollars of funds on there, so it's all kept up in a reserved, restricted balance, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Jerry, seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the finance reports, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Consideration to approve the list of foundation members.
Standard procedure, the foundation has our new members listed on the sheet there. And we have, what's that?
We did that.
We did that, yeah.
There are six new members. So, the new members would be Steve Pegel, Matt Montgomery, Kathy Banks, Laura Freeberg, Laura Qualley, and Jamie Dunback. And the foundation has awarded their entire budget for the year, so thank them again.
I'll make a motion for the new members.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Kerry. Approval or consideration to approve a September PLC early release day.
This is something you've always had on the calendar. We've had so many people look at the calendar. All the teachers voted on the calendar. Can't tell you how many eyes have looked at that calendar and yet somehow we forgot the Wednesday PLC in September. So, we are asking to have that like it's always been and have a second Wednesday as a PLC day so that the teachers can take what they're learning in August and carry that over and do that in September.
I'll make a motion, Trevor.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion?
Don't you guys know they do like number of PLCs per year?
Yep, there's always nine.
And we can have nine on the calendar.
We only had eight. I know, I went back and looked at it again. Don't know how we missed it.
All in favor of approving the September PLC, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to post and hire a 1.0 full-time preschool teaching position.
I'll be Jake.
I had a reservation looking to fill. I'm actually going to have to fill at least a 0.5 after this, too. I'm just trying to figure out what we're going to offer for next fall, but for sure I need a 1.0. I had a teacher who resigned earlier on the consent agenda who was going to stay home with her little one, so.
I'll make a motion to approve. Jerry made the motion. I'll second it. Kurt, second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Kerry. Consideration to approve the proposed 17-18 budgets.
So, like other, either initial proposed budgets, what you'll see in front is just the basic kind of coming down to the fund balances rather than having all of these break down by programs or by accomplishments. Certainly if you guys want to go through it in either detail, complete detail or by program, you can certainly stop them out, just go through whatever you'd like to see, but really in overall, big picture, we're looking for is the fund balances. So, the document we have, the bottom is just kind of show changes from revised to initial and that's just if you want to kind of see what sort of differences there are from what you approved as the revised 17 budget or most current budgets in process and what's going to be the preliminary budget for 18. The middle numbers are just the revised budget that we're currently operating under for fiscal year 17. So, they're just kind of, those two sections are really just for reference. What we're really looking at is the top section of numbers, the initial budget for fiscal year 18. And the big one obviously for us is the general fund and what kind of fund balance we are projected to look at at the end of fiscal year 18. We have a fund balance policy that says we'd like to be at about 8% to 12% of our expenditures to have that in reserve. This puts us at about $940,000, kind of on the thin end of that 8% to 12%. But the key thing is with some adjustments that were necessary, we're looking at to have a balanced budget in the general fund for fiscal year 18. This is with projecting only 66 roughly kindergarten students coming in, where we usually project 80, so there's a decrease in revenue just automatically off the start from that and then looking inside that budget of having to do some reduction in expenditures to help offset that in order to get to a balanced general fund. Some of the things would be within curriculum and not either our textbooks, taking some funds out of that, not doing van and transportation and then some reduction in tech, about 10 grand. All the numbers where we feel like we can still do and function with what our core goals have been and are discussed and approved, but really trying to trim things out as much as we can to make sure we stay balanced in our dipping down into that general fund and going below that 8% reserve is really the key focus on that. It does account for some steps with salaries and a slight increase for the questions that come through, not a ton, but enough so that we can at least feel good about we put out numbers that we're not going to be hit with a huge reduction for having to come mid-year and have to do some large cuts.
Can I hop in there just a quick second? I handed out a sheet, kind of, it's difficult when we have 66 kindergarteners. I mean, that really changed a lot of things for us. And so, I just kind of laid that out, you know, if we want 80, but we've got 12 less, it gives you where I've got to find that number. And so, Josh and I have been going back and forth probably for a month now. I brought it to admin. You know, we've done some non-impactful things, I think. 62,000 in the curriculum, as you referenced, not with the curriculum committee, not with the principals. Next year is a review year anyway, so it worked out really well to hold that budget. Some of the conversation, Kurt, that we've had before on technology and curriculum, I think this is kind of an example where technology is helping us out in those areas. We still are going to do our online subscriptions, so it's really important. We talked about that at the curriculum committee tonight, so those will still be there. The transportation, I'm meeting on Thursday with some organizations where you can lease it, get reimbursed for the special education costs, but you never own the vehicles. Lori heard about it at one of her meetings and I'm going to do a follow-up on Thursday with that. If that's the case and we get reimbursed for special education vans, this might be a better route to go than to buy them and hang on to them forever. You know, you can kind of rent them, they pay for it and then give them back. It might be an option. Nonetheless, because of the number of routes we will be able to cut there, we had a $5,000 stipend for AdSIS when it was new. We're going to remove that. My recommendation later on will be, we can't really belong to C and MREA, very unusual to do that. Last year, they let us offer, offered us a really good deal, so we joined both. I think staying with C, our main organization, will be the right way to do it. And then I noted the energy savings that you saw tonight. Certainly we've got that built in. So, at the end of the day, we've balanced this budget, but it is one of your tighter budgets with a low kindergarten class that's really kind of throwing things up. So, Josh, if you want to pick it up from there, but I wanted you to understand where everything was going and where the reductions were.
And that kind of hits on my main thing with the general fund is while we are presenting a balanced budget, it is pretty clear on the center where in previous years, we might have a little bit more built in, like if you had utilities or, you know, we're trying to add a little bit more on the lower end of that to try to make things work. The benefit of that is that we should see automated reductions in that product that we've done in our utility and fuel bills, but to project what that exactly is going to be, we can't do that. So, why put in a modest reduction for utilities and fuel? It could be less or a greater reduction. I won't be seeing the end of it just because our building should be operating much more efficiently now with the project complete. So, what we've been spending for the last 60 years per se, for instance, on the borders, we shouldn't be spending less when the seasons come through.
We can't use the numbers he gave tonight as the projected budget savings, even if we use the lower end of the budget.
I can work on that with it and I can try to plug into it. I guess, you know, historically, I kind of have a goal with what's been there and put in some slight reduction. If, I haven't seen those numbers, I have to pull them through and take a look at them.
I think according to him, it was like over $220,000 in savings in energy from the top three and I think we're estimated at 180, so we've exceeded that. So, I was just wondering if that's, am I talking about this right or my left-field, right-field thing?
We built that in. You've got to remember, this is the first year they're saying this is in there. It certainly does give you some of that cushion that he talks about, but then again, I'm just carrying over the 40,000 for the tennis courts. You know, those types of things are going to cost something, so that would give you an avenue to pull that from a few.
Right. And I know that you like to over-budget on some things, just that cushion and fuel is a good one where you might save money during the year if fuel costs to go down or whatever.
My preference, Josh's preference, we think alike that way.
Yeah, but I was just, so I'm on the right track with the savings. Wherever gets hidden or fluffed or we don't account for it. Now, on the other side of that, they guaranteed a percentage of savings. If they don't achieve that, what was the other side of that again? Because they were guaranteed to save so much.
They pay the difference.
Right. Okay.
But a $20,000 compressor eats that up really fast, you know, those kinds of things.
Right. I'm just looking to, you know, if they guaranteed it 183, then again, I'm not saying put it in here to spend because again, I'd like to build that fund balance a little bit more.
Well, you have to remember, we have that in there, but we've also been talking about, you know, the auditorium needs have been very well documented and if you're going to save in facilities, typically you try to keep it in that same area. And so, that is the idea. Resurfacing the parking lots is becoming a really soon needed type of thing, or we're getting there. So, it's again, we're trying to budget all that. You'll be seeing the five-year plan coming out really soon as soon as we have some of these numbers and preventive maintenance numbers and things like that. But you are on the right track, Rob, 100% on the right track.
I like that.
Good job.
I'll take care of the general fund, just to help, that's right, to go quickly through the other ones. Food service is the one that would probably be the most. I would say the general fund really is the big one for us to make sure we're concerned with, but the next in line is going to be the food service. And we have quite a few repairs necessary in fiscal year 17 for food service and we're going to have deficit spend in fiscal year 17. We still should have a positive fund balance at the end of it, but projecting it to next year, you know, being real, again, positive balance, but only about $2,000 and that's a very small percentage of fund balance. So, it's one that we want to make sure we keep an eye on as we go throughout the year. Community service doing really quite well in relation to the size of their fund. Construction, I have balance in there only because there's some interest that we have to allocate it and I'm going to make sure that we do this correctly. If it can be dumped back into the general fund or if it goes to debt service and making sure that we're allocating the funds correctly, but there will be a little, a slight carryover in that from fiscal year 17. Trust and even see on the scholarship funds, usually a little bit of an in and out. Some of the scholarships are set up on trust, so there will be a slight spend down usually, but again, you see about $115,000 there in the trust or scholarship fund. And the last two funds are the OPEB trust and OPEB debt. It has been the philosophy of the board on that billion-dollar OPEB bond to give the $100,000 each year allocated towards helping out with some of the retiree health and dental benefit. What this will show is that after fiscal year 19, we won't have much of anything left in that OPEB trust and it'll be at that point, you know, we really have to do some planning on what do we want to do. We won't have that $100,000 to help offset some of those costs. It will be an increase of expenditures into the general fund if we don't have something in place to help fund OPEB. Prior to the initiation of that bond, we did it a pay-as-you-go and maybe that's the way we can go back into voting to find that $100,000 somewhere after fiscal year 19. Just really a summary of where we are in the funds for the preliminary budget for 18 and for any questions, I can certainly ask or answer.
If OPEB is a non-voter levy, correct?
When we, when we put it in place, it was a non-voter approved levy. It just happened to be at the window with the statute that we can do so. If we were to go out today and do the same, it would have to be a voter approved and they're going to want to have a subset clause in our contracts stating that the retiree benefit will be taken out of the contract, so they won't be able to have that health and dental portion paid for by the district. That'd be some sort of sense that the current employees would get it as they, retired employees come in, they would no longer receive that benefit.
Has that actually increased with time or decreased, the need for the OPEB?
No. We plug it in and projected to, you help offset expenditures, so it's probably been more of a need to have it. You know, after fiscal year 19, then we've kind of relied on it for the last 10 years and we need to find a way to help offset that $100,000.
Is that what I was getting at, is a $100,000 increase during time?
Uh, no, we've kept that steady. You know, we just kind of plan to keep it steady. With our actual study, there's implicit rate subsidy, and someone who spends far more time than I do with numbers figures these things out. But it isn't that ballpark though, between 85 and $150,000, and we've just kind of kept it steady at $100,000 to offset. Yep.
Other questions?
Josh, do a lot of work on this. Thank you.
I will do it.
Thank you.
I would look for a motion to approve the proposed budget.
I'm going to motion.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Kerry? Consideration to approve the contract of Destiny Stamer?
It is Stamer. It would be Tim.
Uh, we had, excuse me, we had awesome candidates. We interviewed four candidates. I, we talked at our committee. We would have been happy hiring any of them, and Destiny stood out above the rest of them. So we're happy to have her on board. She's already met our staff. She's already got lots of different stuff, and she's already, you know, working for next fall, so.
She had four interviews?
Yes, we interviewed four applicants, and we probably, I think we ended up having, remember how many we had, probably?
Thirty-two, so.
Twenty.
Twenty-seven, maybe?
Yeah. We had quite a few applicants, more than I expected to have.
Can we read about what's going on with education and available teachers? Did the numbers surprise you?
Uh, I was a little surprised because of some other area schools that had hired English teachers already this fall that had far, far fewer applicants. So I was very pleasantly surprised. And we hired an English teacher four years ago, and I did not, we probably had a third of the applicants that we did this time. So we had quite a few people that used English, was, again, I was very pleasantly surprised by that, so. There are a couple of positions for people that are nearing retirement age that are kind of looking at the calendar, seeing whether I can retire. So I don't worry about fighting anybody. But no, I've been pretty lucky so far, so.
What, whose position is this your place in?
Heather Rosman.
Sure.
You were going to accept a term of resignation, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Brenda to approve the contract for Destiny.
One second.
Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry? Destiny, welcome aboard. Consideration to approve the tenure list.
I would pull it up, but it's not coming up, so perhaps it's in your packet. Laurie, you only gave me, you didn't give me viewing rights, that's okay.
There it is. It's on the page.
The tenure list.
The tenure list. Please scratch Sam McKean. She is not tenure-eligible this year. She was only, how it works in the state of Minnesota, you have to be somewhere three years, and then that following year, you can receive tenure. She was actually in Hayfield for two years, so she actually has to start over in Cannon Falls and do another three years. That's how Minnesota law works. So Steven Strauss will be looking for tenure tonight.
I was wondering, when does, it automatically changes over, happens in their contract, doesn't it? So I, up at the Minnesota School Board Conference, Bill, he had mentioned that unless there's a recommendation to not renew, that we as a board shouldn't even vote on because it automatically goes into effect.
You really don't have to do this. It's been our practice to do it, typically.
The reason why is he's saying that in case something happens between now and the time that it actually goes into effect, which is in the fiscal year, is that right?
June 30th.
June 30th, which isn't, you know, that, what if something were to happen and we, some teacher did something foolish, whatever, then we have to go through the process of the legalities of it.
I mean, that is something we could look at, it's just not, it's a, it's a law, so you really can't not, you know, it would be a principal saying, I'm not giving this person tenure. I guess then you'd have to be voting on non-tenure, non-renew.
He was just recommending that we not vote on because there's another month there that if something were to happen, it's going to happen anyways unless you elect a non-renew. Makes sense?
You're saying it's just timing?
Yeah, no, between now and something, God forbid, happened, you know, that we'd have to let someone go.
So is this automatic, is what you're saying, that at the end of this fiscal year, July 1st, it's an automatic tenure unless we?
It's by contract, so what we do right now, it doesn't matter.
Unless we say no.
Unless we say, right.
Right.
But it'd have to be a letter of non-renew.
We're not the list of ten, do we?
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I know exactly what you're saying.
We'll remove it for next year. We can make a note of it. We'll look into it. We'll talk to MSBA too.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry to approve our.
One second.
Our person. Seconded by Katie. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry? Consideration to approve the fall head coaches on the very last page, I think you'll find them.
On the screen up there as well, Brian, if you will.
And of course.
Nope, some familiar names there. The only new name is Dan Myers, who's approved a couple meetings ago, a couple months ago, I suppose. He's been on football staff, and he's a Cannon Falls native, otherwise all were on staff last year.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How do you, like, is it just, unless the coach decides to not come back for next season, do they automatically get their place? Or do you evaluate them at the end of the year?
Yeah, they do get evaluation.
And it, like, I was just curious at how it all works, because I'm new at this and trying to figure out.
So they are all one-year contracts.
Okay.
You assume that they renew unless we tell them we're not going to renew you.
Okay.
So that's how it goes. They're kind of assume that you're going to be the coach next year unless they tell you that we're going to not renew you.
Okay.
We do an evaluation. I had, I polled the students on the varsity teams.
Okay.
I asked them for their opinions on a whole bunch of questions. Coach does a self-appraisal, and then I do that same appraisal that the coach does, and together we go over it.
Okay, sounds good to know. Thank you.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve all head coaches.
Motion by Kurt.
One second.
Seconded by Rob. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Kerry? Update in the summer food service program.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into huge detail in this. I just know there's a lot of awesome buzz around town, and there's a lot of real big excitement about our summer food program. If you're under the age of 18, you get to come up for breakfast or for lunch, and it is free for all students. We've got kids that ride their bikes up here. We've, you know, it's just kind of a fun, a fun community event. This is a federal grant. Thanking to Lori and Wendy for working so hard on this. And then I also wanted to thank Sarah down at Community Ed, you're Sarah, Molly, all the Community Ed people, food service employees, and the parents that have encouraged their kids to attend. We've had amazing numbers. This year, the site will be down at the elementary instead of the CCC because we're done with construction. A lot easier to serve kids down there. There's bike racks already there. It's just a perfect setup. You know, we've got it all over Facebook, getting a lot of positive feedback there. If they have questions, we're routing those to Lori, so if you're watching tonight, want questions on that, route those questions to her. We want everyone to feel welcome, so there's no application, there's no anything. You walk in, you're under the age of 18, and you don't have to be from Cannon Falls. If your niece or nephew is visiting and you just want something fun for the kids to do, it's really a fun place to walk through, and Lori would attest to this too. They're talking, they're communicating, you know, they're not on their devices, they're not doing those things. It's a neat, it's a neat setting, you know. I know my son last year, a couple times after baseball, they all came up. You know, sometimes they get a frozen ice cream treat afterwards, and they'll, they'll ride their bikes up here to just kind of chance it. So it's a neat, a neat thing that, it's a federal grant, right? Not a state grant?
Yep.
Yep, so, thank you, Lori. I just wanted you to be aware of it. Very proud of this.
I do this year.
Yes. You're not in your 18 year.
So this is.
Do you have to show ID?
Second year?
Yep, year two.
I mean, it could be under 18.
Five year, it's a real big, some of the programs are possibly going by the wayside for wheels-on-wheels, for example, that's been, is there some type of guarantee for that?
It's guaranteed for five years, yes, through the USDA.
And you're seeing numbers?
Increase.
Fun. Do we have anything else?
I'd like to say congratulations to Tim for being.
Congratulations.
We're really expecting a lot from Jennifer Derrick.
Then I want to ask about the participation ribbon.
You see what we have on for the next board meeting? Could you remind us, we did some shifting of meetings, I think in order to have two August meetings, maybe?
Two September meetings.
Oh.
It's June, July, and August are only one meeting. September, you added one back. Is that correct?
That's what I have now.
You won't need two in August because it's our year yet.
You can see what's on the agenda coming up. I'm sure we'll have add additions to it, so. At this point in time, unless we have anything else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
Jerry wins that. Who's the second?
Kurt.
Any other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Jake, do you want to hold the Bible?